Hello everyone and welcome to the Innovayer market consultation session where we have today City Council of Las Rosas de Madrid is taking the centre stage with its challenge called MOTIN. So today, we are going to start this session with a warm welcome from VRL PK, Head of United Transition and Business Acceleration Services at the European Innovation Council. He will set the stage for an exciting hour of innovation. You will gain then insights into the Innovayer program, the driving force powered by the EIC that fuels organizational growth. Rafael Ormedo from City Council of Las Rosas de Madrid, sorry, will present a pressing challenge that requires innovation solutions. Then, we will proceed with this open market consultation event and participants, attendees can engage through the Q&amp;A session of the event. There are two ways to participate. You could write your questions, comments or remarks in the Q&amp;A session, or you could raise your hand and we will give you the ability to speak by unmuting the microphone. One final particularity, this event is being recorded for dissemination purposes in the scope of the Innovayer project. And without further ado, I would like to introduce the same give the floor to VRL PK from the European Innovation Council to share a few words about today's event. Thank you. Good morning, VRL.
Good morning, Mariana. I hope you can hear me loud and clear.
Perfect.
Good morning, fans and supporters of innovation procurement. I take for granted that all of us present here agree that the procurement of innovation is vital for European economy. There have been numerous reports recommending increased use of this instrument in Europe and studies documenting its positive impacts. Innovation procurement has this particular characteristic that it catalyzes the technological advancement, enhances European competitiveness and in the process fosters sustainable economic growth. How does it do it? By facilitating the development and deployment of innovative solutions to meet complex societal and market challenges. The European Innovation Council, or EIC as we like acronyms, is encouraging the procurement of innovation in Europe by providing substantial innovation funding for developing this innovative solution, our so-called supply side. And we have around 10 billion euros for the seven years. But not only money, we are providing also comprehensive support and creating synergies between buyers of innovation and our innovative companies and SMEs and startups. And Innovayer is just one of such a program. But we, just to give another example, recently launched another contract strategic use of innovation procurement for, I'm sure you will hear more from this. Today's event holds the potential to ignite collaborative innovation, bridging the gap between organizational needs, as we have today one of them, and groundbreaking solutions and in the process accelerating the development and integration of these transformative technologies in the market. We strongly invite all companies, SMEs and startups, to engage in these market consultations and notably EIC companies. There will be 16 such market consultations and they are all, they all represent new business opportunities. And because indeed these challenges will be launched later in a call for innovation suppliers and solvers. And we expect to have them in October or the latest November this year. And then, of course, you are all invited to apply. This being said, I wish you a successful event and I'm very curious how this will develop in the future.
Thank you. Thank you, VRL. That's such a great introduction to this project. Before we move to the challenge presentation, I would also complement VRL words by saying a few words about this project. It's funded by the European Commission and it's being implemented by three organizations: F-Success, Civita and TIC Piamet. And as also VRL was mentioning in a nutshell, this project brings together public and private organizations. We call challengers and innovative SMEs, we call solvers. So they will jointly co-create innovative solutions. For sequential steps, Innovayer helps organizations to identify and describe innovation needs, to find and connect with innovation suppliers, to co-create innovative pilots with innovative companies and also offers legal supports to prepare tenders to purchase this co-created solution. As you can see, there is funding support for all the four sequential steps. Up until now, we've been working and selected 15 challengers, supporting them to improve the description of their unmet innovation need. And we are now currently in the second phase of the program where we help the challengers, the solvers, sorry, the challengers to connect with the solvers, the innovation providers. So you will expect that in October, it will be launching the open call. The solutions, the proposed solution can get up to 58,000 euros to co-create a pilot with the challenger in a 10-month period. Stay please, so please stay tuned to the Innovayer challenge channels for this challenge, also through our social media networks, but F-Success page, the one that you use it to register at this event. So now, without further ado, I would like to give the floor to Rafael Ormedo to present the MOTIN challenge.
Okay. Thanks a lot, Mariana. Thanks a lot, VRL. And it's a pleasure for me to be with you and to be in this session and also to, it's very grateful because the opportunity you are giving us to ahead with innovation in our city. So let me share my screen right now. I think... Let me know if you can, if you can see it.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay. So what I'm going to present right here is the MOTIN project. I will explain later what that, which is the science for this acronym. So what we are looking for is, right, what you are, what you are seeing here is an innovative mobility procurement for deploying an innovative and low-impact charging points network for electric bikes and skater in the metropolitan area of Madrid, technological west. This is what we are looking for, but let's, let us play here something with more detail. La Rosas de Madrid is a large city around, well, in the Madrid region. It has a 95,000 population. This is the fourth largest city in the Madrid region, is close to the Madrid city, 16 kilometers away. And now the city is facing the new challenge, talking about emerging, emerging social and urban environmental and economical challenge that are rising around the fast growing of the city. But the Las Rosas is not only working by itself, it's part of a regional cluster. It's called Madrid Oeste Tecnológico, this is MOT. And working together with different, with other three cities in the west side of Madrid, we are trying to develop a smart metropolitan area. So this is something that we don't have to forget, that we are not working only for ourselves, but also trying to promote innovation in this smart metropolitan area. In order to move forward to the development of a friendly and sustainable city, the La Rosas City Council is implementing different actions, talking about innovation and so on. Some of those innovative or innovation actions are into the new urban mobility plan that has been already developed in the city. With this plan, different actions have been, has been considered. And one of those actions is to promote the use of new electrical means of personal mobility in the city. Let's take a look in the current scenario. Nowadays, due to the large population of La Rosas, but also the vast, the large territory it has, and La Rosas also has a huge commercial and industrial activity that generates hundreds of personal trips. 331,000 trips per day came up every day in the city. But some of those, not only considering internal trips, 30% of those trips are internal trips, but 60% of those are external trips. But considering the whole, this whole scenario, only 0.26% of those trips are sold using mobility, electric personal mobility vehicles such as bicycles and skaters. Why? This is, this is something that we want to find the reason, but we also want to find the solution. One of the reasons could be because, because the city is not prepared for support this new mean, new mobility mean for urban mobility. On the other hand, there are not, we are also those vehicles depend on electric charging points and the city doesn't have, doesn't provide this kind of facility for users, for these users. On the other hand, there are a lot of, well, different bike paths around the city, but most of those goes through natural environments or open areas. And promoting and trying to develop this kind of facilities in natural or green areas has may have, well, high impact, environmental impact. So this is not easy to solve. How can we do such a thing like this in order to provide this kind of electric chargers with low impact, but also considering the open areas? Our purpose is exactly that, to move forward towards a friendly and sustainable city, improving people mobility using, well, this kind of electric vehicles. With this, we are also for sure considering also in order to, to go ahead with the non-pollution for the city, but also to provide and to boost, well, a more healthy mobility for people and for the citizens. Where is the magic of the solutions that we are, we are trying to promote? Because there's nothing new, talking about, well, electric charging points, personal mobility and so on. We want to focus on three, in those three main areas. This is a solutions that have to be, well, friendly with the green areas, but also we want to, to develop a sustainable solutions accessible for all the people. So we are not only considering bikes and skater, electric bikes and skaters, but also to provide the solutions for personal mobility of people with disabilities in order to provide also a solution that could be suitable for them. On the other hand, this is something that we don't want to solve for a specific community or in a specific area of the city. This is something that wants to grow up, because we want to spread these solutions not only for La Rosas, but also for the MOT, for this regional area of Madrid, but also considering what is Madrid Green Corridor, that is a 200 kilometers green corridor that is rising around Madrid and will collect, will pass through 25 cities around the Madrid metropolitan area. And this is something really great. On the other hand, we don't want to stop here because we want to move these solutions to other Spanish cities, but also to other European cities. So which is the challenge? To deploy a charging station network for electric bikes and skaters in open and natural areas using solar energies, solar panels, but talking about mobility through an accessible, efficient and low environmental impact solution. So this is our challenge. We have been considering different requirements for the, for the solution, but talking about the main requirements that could be collected in one simple slide, we have been collecting, well, a few of those. In the first, first one is that we want to provide the free solutions for users. So no charge, they will use these solutions with no restrictions. And we will provide the solutions with a user-centered design approach, thinking about the user, not only talking about the city council or the environment and so on, but also useful for the citizen. Considering technical requirements, we have three different components of the, of the solutions. We're here in the, in the right side, in the back of the slide. You can see that there will be a charging station or a charging point, but also we want to, to connect this charging point with the server in order to provide different services and functionalities and also with a smartphone app that the user can use in order to know which are the charging points available, which is the status, if it's possible to book or whatever. Oh, this is something that with the, with this smartphone, we don't only want to, to provide services for using this, this station, but also trying to promote and to engage people, but also to promote and to talk about different issues that could be, could support user to, or could boost user to use this kind of, of solution. So we are talking about a charging station that will be located in open and natural areas. So with a wireless connection connectivity, using solar panels, because there will not be a connection with the electrical grid of the, of the city. So this is something that can serve to work independently. But we do want to create one and then two, and also to do it this scalable. So this, this is the, one of the main signs, to deploy something, something that could be easily scalable to different areas of the city. We want to implement 24 different points. With this pilot, we want to start with two main points in order to, to create the first stage of the, of the project. Talking about environmental requirements, those are, those charging points will be located in natural areas. So this solution doesn't, will have a low environmental impact. So this is something that is very important for us. And last, we also want to engage stakeholders with this solution. So we, we don't want only to give a solutions for the users, for the citizens, but we want to engage stakeholders connected and committed with creating a positive impact in terms of society, environmental, environmental issues and so on. The pilot's scope will be to define feasible and technical, economical solutions, implementing two charging points considering the deployment of the charging stations, the back office implementations, the user web app, and also talking about user engagement and creating this stakeholders, stakeholders network. We, we are developing also a smart city platform for the city and in the future, the back office implementation will be connected with a, with a smart city platform. The solutions, well, the pilot wants to engage users, but also to validate the implemented solutions. So this is not only to want to do all the technical installations, but also to engage users, to involve citizens, to test with them and so on. And in the end, to define lessons learned in order to, to work for the next stage of the project, in order to talking about scalability and deployment in all their different areas. And for anyone who want to, to take some information about this issue, here in the, in the bottom part of the slide, here you can see our email, cpm@lasrotas.es and you can contact with us in this, in this email. The pilot conditions, we are talking about SMEs with technology-based companies and so on. We want to promote a positive impact, talking about environment, but also social impact, talking about accessibility and so on. We want to accomplish the, the solutions and the pilot aims to accomplish all the functional and operational requirements that we are, we will deploy, we will write for the, for these, for these solutions. It should have to be implemented in 10 months, in 10 months, scalable and cost-effective in order to, to move forward, not only with these two stations, but also trying to promote the next stage with 24 more stations. And also to create a business plan, because for us, the business plan is important in order to, to provide evidences that it will be scalable and sustainable. The spectating but is to boost new run transport means, to promote cleaner renewable energies and to improve the city image and position in this. This is something very important for us, because Las Rosas is working in order to, to be a part in the, in the smart city, well, puzzle in Europe and, and this is something important for us. The key performance indicators will be the up-down loads that we can achieve with this development, the number of charging points installed, we, we have declared two, at least two charging points. Also, the self-power that we are generating using those solar solution, the engagement, how many users are engaged with our solutions per month and the impacts in, in media that, that these solutions will have in the future. The business opportunity for us, it seems that it's a clear opportunity as well, because we are talking about, it's not only solutions for Las Rosas, because we are talking about a lot of people in Spain using these electric bikes and skaters, but also the, the problem, we are trying to solve that the neuroregulation has reduced the number of users during the last years. But we, we want to, we want to go ahead with the solutions. We have estimated 250 users per month per station. And the pilot could be quickly scaled into different 24 charging points here in Las Rosas and also to the Madrid Oeste Tecnológico metropolitan areas, engaging 15,000, 15,000 users per month. Different business model may be considered, because these are solutions that could consider a B2B, a business-to-business, a solutions, providing services for maintenance companies, but also a B2G, providing a direct business with city councils, but also a B2C model, engaging or selling different services for, for customers or citizens. And also the national and European Public Research and Development Regulation and Scenario Support Program that could be really nice in order to co-finance different solutions and so on. About the challenge, what are we, what, which is the question that we have for the providers? It's about the challenge. Is it clear for you? Does it, does it make sense? And if you want to know something else about this, on the other hand, if you know different solutions that could be available in other cities of Europe that could give us some cues in order to go ahead with this? Because this is something that for sure we are talking about Las Rosas, but on the other hand, this is something that we want to move, to move ahead. And probably you know other solutions, similar challenges, or maybe addressing related solutions. About those solutions, what could you imagine that could be the best solutions to meet the requirements of this challenge? So we have been talking about something, but we want, we don't want to close potential solution for the challenge. And on the other hand, do you know a solution available on the market to solve this challenge completely or partially? And about the pilot, direct questions. What did you consider to be the most important objective to pursue this, the development of the pilot? Which kind of barriers do you think could affect the deployment of the pilot and the scalability of the project? And, and, well, and could you respond, your company could respond to the development of this pilot on your own, if you can count with other partners, collaborating with other partners to create or co-create a solutions for us? And this is, this is all. I'm going to stop the presentation.
Thank you, Rafael. Well, I think you could leave the, the slide where you have potential questions.
Okay.
Because it, it will be good to engage the participants if they would like to provide you with some questions now.
This one?
Yes, that is good. Thank you. So now the participants could raise their hands or they could comment in the Q&amp;A chat box. We will read the, the questions. Let's, minutes to see if someone shows up. Yeah, we have here one question now. So Rafael, regarding the pilot KPIs, the key performance indicators, could you specify the number associated with each KPI to understand what would be considered as a successful pilot?
Okay, not right now, because this is something that we have already done, agreed for trying to, to deploy and to, to define specific figures considering the KPIs. So if you want, I can provide these figures later in order to understand how many downloads we do expect per month, in order to understand which, which could be the power generated by the solar panels. On the other hand, also the average use of the, of the facilities and so on. And those figures are already clear for us. And if you want, we can share for you. I don't, I don't know exactly right now, so I prefer don't do, give you some figures now. But this is something that we, as far as I told you, considering... I, let me check, when talking about the business model, we gave some figures, for instance, the potential daily users is estimated in 250 users per month and per station. This is something that we want to check, if we are gonna be able to do such a thing like this or not. So this is one figure that is more or less clear right here. And, well, I'm sorry, but I cannot give you other specific figures for this right now.
No, don't worry, Rafael. You are right that we can follow up on this through the email of, of the F-Success platform, the open discussion section also that we have there. So all the participants could engage with, with all this panel through the channels. Before we, well, we, we still have 30 minutes of this session, but before ending, I will again share all the links and all the possibilities to, to be in touch with us. Also, I will post here in the chat box the link to the platform. But while I'm doing that, we have here another question that was in the Q&amp;A session in the box. So amazing project, you mentioned it that the project will be user-centric. What two challenge are you anticipating, especially in regards to using the charging stations?
Sorry, the question is?
So the question is regarding, what will be the two challenges that you are anticipating when users will use the charging stations for the bikes?
Well, this is a, well, this is a nice question. First of all, considering user engagement, we want to, we want to define a solutions suitable and useful for, for users. So for us, it's very important to understand their, their really requirements and needs of the users. This is the first, the first, the first challenge. How are we going to share this kind of information? How are we going to know exactly what the users and citizens want, you know, want to do? Or which problems or which are their necessities in order to define and to specify the, the real requirements that we will have to go ahead with this? And this is the first stage. On the other hand, we also, at the end of the project, we, we, we have to engage then again in order to use the facilities and in order to test and to give us some feedback about the solution. So those are the main challenges, to engage them since the beginning in order to understand the, the requirements and needs they have and to engage them again at the end of the project in order to make a real use of the facilities and in order to understand, to get the lessons learned. and in order to understand, to get the lessons learned from them.
Yes, so this, the the main focus should be the user-centric, the usability aspects to
Yeah, for instance, one, one challenge for us, in order, talking about disabled people, people with disabilities, this is something that is not easy, how a solution like this, which kind of accessibility requirements could be available for people with disabilities in a facility like this? So as an example.
Yeah, I imagine that one key important part of this solution will be the personas and
Yeah, right, exactly.
Personas.
Yeah, actually, as far, and we are not talking only about young people, we are talking about all the
All the population.
Yeah.
Great. Super interesting, and thank you for these questions, then. They are helping to go deeper in the in the challenge. And we have another one. Also, in terms of user experience, are there any solutions in the market that you consider a good reference?
Yeah, we we have already find some specific solution, like the one we we saw you, like this one, those are, let me share with you the the right slide.
Okay.
Here, here you can see those solar panels in the floor, installed in the floor. And also with the the whole installations with self-energy solution. So this is a solution already available, but we we want to move forward, because this is something that we don't want to put this kind of facility in, only in this kind of environments, on city, city, well, more more friendly environments. But what are going to be the the main barriers, obstacles and difficulties when we do have to implement this in natural areas? And in the other hand, what would happen if we want to connect this with the back office in order to provide the specific services? And even more, how can we use a user app that could engage user and boost them to use this kind of facilities? And even more, how are we, how can we create an scalable solutions, a low-cost solutions in order to scale the solutions, not only for those two charging stations, but also to the twenty four different points in Las Rosas? And jumping to Madrid Oeste Tecnológico, this metropolitan area, and jumping to other cities in Spain and Europe?
Okay, so this this solution that we are seeing now is is now in City de las Rosas. So I'm curious.
No, no.
Also raising the the hand, yes, please go ahead, Bertra.
Yeah, good morning. Bertra, I'm from EIC, Basex, Business Expression Services Unit. Yeah, thank you very much for the presentation, Rafael. But one little thing that goes a bit in the same remark that you started to to say, Mariana, was to say a bit, from where do you start? Do you already have a fleet, or do you have already a solution that is put in place in Las Rosas? And my second question is related to the, to the timing. You mentioned that it has to be developed in ten months' time. But tell us a bit more perhaps about the agenda. You already have a budget engaged, and it should be foreseen to be realized in two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five? How does it work?
Oh, for the, for the first question about the solutions, we don't have nowadays, nothing available in Las Rosas. Well, there are charging points, but for electric vehicles and cars and so on. And this is something that we have been already developing solutions for electric charging of some cars for free for the citizens. But there's nothing like this for for electric bikes and scooters. So there's no solutions right now in the in the city available. But we know the solution is available in other, in other places, in other areas. But what we do have is a large network of of cycle paths. This is something that is available right now. So we have the path for for scooters and bikes, but we don't, we don't have the charging points. Talking about the the agenda, well, this is not, I I don't know, as far as I understand, we have a specific agenda, but this is something that probably Mariana could give you further details, because we know that we have a very accurate agenda, talking about the innovation program, and those ten months will be included into this agenda. Yeah, probably, Mariana, if you want to tell something else about this?
Yeah, we we have ten months, a ten-month period for the
I don't remember when those ten months start. Yeah, for the, yeah, for the, yeah.
In October, the the call will be launched.
Okay.
If I might add, the cooperation phase will start in February.
In February.
Yeah, thank you. From February on, we will have the ten-month period.
That's the piloting of the solution, yes, absolutely, I confirm this. Thank you, sorry, Anna, go ahead.
No worries. I'm, I was wondering, because you will be involved in choosing the solver that that's going to co-create the solution with you, what will be the most important aspect of key decision points for you while choosing the solver?
Well, first, we are looking for SMEs with a technological base and innovation purpose of the company. We're very technological, so very technological-based companies. Because as far as we understand, this is something that is clear for us. But we don't want to make only the the only effort in trying to implement the technical solution. So for us, it's important also to co-create the, to co-create the engagement of the of the users of these solutions, in order to understand these solutions as a as a whole, because it will be included and connected with the with the smart city platform in the future. So we don't want just solutions for right now for them, so the solver. We want them to join us and to come with us in this, in this way, in order to go ahead and in the future to be part of the solution, in order to to co-create the final solutions for the future, in order to understand which are the the opportunities that this challenge and these solutions could give us for the future, not only for urban mobility, but for other challenge of the city, or even talking about social impact and talking about mobility. And how can we connect this with a net zero city, in order, talking about pollution and so on? So we don't want just a technical solver in very, very much with a very, with a large expertise in this kind of issue, but also with a large vision and with the with the capability to join us and to come with us in this, in this way. We don't want them to solve all the solutions by themselves, because this is why we were talking about, if you are, the solver will be able to to create a solution by himself or with a collaborative partner, because we we can understand and we we think that the collaboration is really important for us, because we are talking about different issues, talking about renewable energies, we are talking about connectivity, digitalization, we are talking about facilities, and and those are different skills for for, to be solved only for one single company. So collaboration for us is important, so this is what we are looking for with this company.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah, thank you. It's really good to see that you are open to collaboration for the potential SMEs solving this challenge. So, so I, one question came to me is that, so what is your opinion on SMEs that may not have a large experience in this type of solution?
Well, as you know, we are a public entity, so the the main problem, not the main problem, but the main challenge for them is they have to provide us some kind of evidences, in order to to let us know that they will be with us in the future, that they can solve that, so this kind of issues. So for sure, it's not absolutely necessary to have a large experience, but they have to provide us some, some evidences, talking about these warranties for us.
A good profile to get to the submission of the
Yeah.
Great. Let's see if we have more questions coming from the audience. I I I will change the the slide, Rafael.
Yeah, I'm going to stop, sorry.
The the slide where we have the challenge, the challenge channels. So while we are heading to the end of this, reaching the end of the session, the participants could go and join the channels if some questions arise from, well, later to the session. And it's been a very fruitful hour. I see that we may not have more questions coming. So I would like to thank all speakers and all attendees for being with us today. It was a really fruitful hour of innovation. The conversation can continue on F success discussion page associated to this event, the one that you use to register and be here today. We will, we invite you, the channels of this project. Also, stay tuned because of the upcoming call, the October call that will be launching. So we are now in the most important month of this call. And I will thank you all.
Sorry, Mariana, I want to say something else. So please, if anyone do know some something about this issue or about the challenge, if they know any kind of facilities, if they have some idea about something that could help us to go ahead with the pilot and with the solutions, please let us know. And in the other hand, if they are interested and they have some other questions, please don't be afraid and ask us everything you want.
Great, Rafael. He's a very open challenger, so don't be shy to engage.
Right.
Thank you, Rafael, for highlighting this, very important.
Yeah, and Mariana, if I can also invite all all participants, you can also join us for future market consultation that we are organizing in the next hours, so today and and tomorrow, actually. So the next Monday, twelve, we find other open market consultation on the Preplex project, actually. So, yeah, I would, I wanted also personally to thank Rafael and Las Rosas de Madrid for joining the the Inobire project. And all the thanks to to your team, Mariana, from our side, please.
Excellent.
Thank you, it was our our pleasure. Thank you, yeah, we'll be passing the word of this open market consultation challenge for the next days. And I think we could, well, end this session for today. And wishing you all a nice day.